You told me.
All right, if everyone would take their seats, we'll call together the regular meeting for the Board of Alderman for Monday, January 6th, 2020. Happy New Year to everyone. Welcome back. The first order of business, if you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Brunelli.
Present.
Alderwoman Cavalo.
Present.
Alderwoman Cato.
Present.
Alderman DiGiovin Carlo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Kula.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Matthews. Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Nujain.
Present.
Alderman Salvia.
Present.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Here.
Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Present.
Alderman Pernaruski.
Here.
Fifteen present.
Thank you. We have a quorum. With that, the next order of business would be public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the board, please sign up. Mr. Conway, the city sheriff, please state your name and address for the record when you begin to speak. There's a five-minute limit, and I'll give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff?
First speaker tonight from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. On your agenda tonight, it's a very wide-range agenda tonight of bonding issues, but crucial issues that need to be addressed. First item number nine, the $1 million bond on authorization for abandoned properties. This has been the usual amount. I believe we've bonded in the past. I think we've done a good amount of work with the bonding in the past, and I would hope that you approve this to continue this administration's commitment to ridding the city of abandoned buildings and blight issues throughout the city. They've had a proven track record regardless what the naysayers have to say. The $3 million bond, item number 10, on the elevators, I would ask that you approve this on the city buildings. You know, we have a lot of elevators that are ancient. I know one in particular, I think, that is in this bond authorization, is the police department's elevator. I can't tell you how many times I haven't been able to make it from time to time on the second floor. It repeatedly opens up, and I think that through the proven track record of education and what they've been doing with the elevators, I gotta tell you, our school inspector has been out there every day with the people that are putting in the elevators presently, and everything seems to be moving smoothly. So I would ask that you approve this. The Prospect Street bond issue, I would ask that you approve this. Most of our tenants downtown have been asking for years for parking. I would ask that you approve this tonight. This is one authorization to help them with the, one of the parking lots to help with the downtown development and getting more businesses to come downtown. The replacement of the roof at Generali, I would ask that you guys approve that. That's pretty self-explanatory. I don't think that there should be any problems with that. The milling and repaving, I would ask that you approve that. This is something they asked to be done. I want to commend the mayor. You know, we were, originally, we're gonna do this before winter had started, but there had been two critics out there and many other naysayers who said that the mayor should wait till the spring. And this is what bipartisanship is all about, and he decided to do that. I don't know if I would've with all the rhetoric that gets said by these particular groups against him, but that's what bipartisanship is all about, and that's what I wish Washington would have more of. Item number 14, the bond authorization for the new fire truck, I would ask that you approve that. Fire engine number seven is one of the oldest in the fleet. I know that my fellow colleague and brand-new chief would take any questions that you have, and I just want to congratulate him because I think he's done a superb job since taking over the chief's job, Chief Blue. So I hope that, if there's anything I could do on the park side, I don't think you need anything from me, but if there's anything I can do, please let me know.
One minute, Mr. Pelletier.
All right. Lastly, about the network system for the schools, I would ask that you approve that in a time, especially now in the last week or so with talk of possible cyber attacks. I think that this is an urgent need right now to protect our school computers and city computers. I'd ask that you approve that. Everything I could see here seems self-explanatory, so I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. We have a lot on our plate, but I think the people that are here tonight and the great job that they do working together, we should be able to get all this done. Thank you.
Next speaker from 11th Steuben Street, Lawrence V. DePello.
Good evening. Lawrence DePello of 11th Steuben Street. First, I hope everyone had a blessed Christmas and wish everyone a very Happy New Year to come. And two items on the agenda regarding bonding. Many of you were maybe not here when, item number 11, that's the $2 million bond authorization for the Prospect Street parking lot. We went ahead and took a number of years back, I believe it was in the mayor's, O'Leary's first term, what was then the old Seenus Bowling Alley property. And the whole purpose of taking that property was so there was going to be an in and an out for what was to be the downtown bus terminal. And that bus terminal was supposed to have bathrooms for anyone who was going to use the local bus, which used to be, local buses, which used to be on the green. Now, we've had two, not one, but two golden shovels in the ground for that parking garage that was, for that parking garage that was going to be built for the buses, for the, to take the buses off the green. So I had asked this board, I know this is gonna be for a public hearing, I would ask this board to either query the mayor or Mr. LeBlanc and ask him what happened to all the work that was done on the proposals and what the bonding proposal was, so that we were going to build a state-of-the-art bus terminal for the downtown. So we would have them off the green, and yet people would have the ability to get their tickets and have facilities right there in close proximity to the green. The second issue is item number 14. And I know we need the truck replacements, and I brought this up for the last replacement. And hopefully, you'll also query Mr. LeBlanc as to what do we do with the old fire engines? Do we simply scrap them? Or are we, is our intention to sell them to another municipality, and if so, is that going to offset the cost for a new fire engine? It seems whenever we talk about new vehicles or equipment for the city, we're always talking about how these vehicles require a lot of maintenance, therefore, they have to be retired and replaced. But it just seems like the old vehicles end up in the ether. There's never an accounting for what happens to the older vehicles. Now, we all know the fire trucks are extremely expensive, and I'm sure there's other towns that would be more than happy to utilize the fire truck that we're no longer going to use. And if we're gonna be getting thousands of dollars for that, it should be an offset to the cost. So hopefully, you'll seek input from the mayor on item number 11, as well as Mr. LeBlanc, and ask Mr. LeBlanc to provide you with a full spreadsheet on item number 14 for the final cost for the new fire truck. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you. With that, the next item would be the approval of minutes for the meeting of Monday, December 16th, 2019. Is there a motion, Alderman Brunelli?
Yes, Mr. President. Motion approved. The minutes of the regular meeting held on Monday, December 16th, 2019, so moved.
Second. Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Lopez, are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, yes, what will be to approve them? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries. The minutes are approved as presented. With that, just before we break into committee, you should have in front of you an item from Mike LeBlanc regarding a resolution to authorize the issuance of up to $80 million of refunding bonds. It's an opportunity for the city to refund bonds that are currently outstanding, get a much lower interest rate, saving the city money over time, and he'll explain that to you. But I would entertain a motion at this point to add that item on as new business item number 19, refer to the Finance Committee. Alderman Brunelli?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Lopez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries unanimously. The item is added as number 19. And just for the record, the Department of Education has requested that new business item number 15 be removed from the agenda. It's been withdrawn, so that we won't take up this evening. With that, we will recess into committees. We'll begin with the Intergovernmental Committee and then go on to the Finance Committee. Thank you.
I call the Intergovernmental Committee to order. First item on the agenda is item number four. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the selection of Joseph Garvis for the position of Audit Director as submitted by Scott P. Morgan, Director, Human Resources/Civil Service. May I have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve item number four as read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item number five. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a management pay plan salary range adjustment for the position of counsel attorney from the current $45,000 through $72,500 to the proposed range of $67,000 through $117,000 as submitted by Scott P. Morgan, Director, Human Resources/Civil Service. May I have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move the approval of item number five as read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Alderman Sherman?
Thank you for recognizing me across committee. Question I have concerning this pay range increase is in reference to benefits that these employees currently receive from the city. Unlike most other city employees, these employees do not receive a pension. Is that correct?
That is correct.
They, they have no 401K-type fund as well either?
This group does.
They do?
Yeah.
So can you explain that a little bit to me? Does that offset, in your opinion, the pension? Is...
I don't know that it was ever set up to offset a pension. We have two different types of attorney we have appointed, and then we have the Civil Service. They come to us through a competitive process. We only have one of those attorneys who this applies to.
Okay.
And basically, they will follow another contract for their benefits.
Okay, understood. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item number eight. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman not disapprove the reappointment of the following individuals. Daniel J. Ryan, 25 Byron Street, and that's term July 4th, 2018 through July 3rd, 2024 for the Seles Bronson Library Board of Agents. And B. Margaret A. O'Brien, 22-4 Malone Drive, term January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2021, Board of Public Health as submitted by Mayor Neil M. O'Leary. May I have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move not to disapprove the reappointment of the board members as read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, last item on the agenda is item number 18. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the application for the Connecticut Recovers Grant in the amount of $50,000 administered by the Connecticut Realtors and Connecticut Realtors Foundation and has no funding/matching requirements. Projected term January/February 2020 through July 1st, 2021 as submitted by Jennifer L. Dewitt, Prevention Coordinator, Public Health Department. May I have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move the approval of item number 18 as read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Adjourn.
I call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Item number two, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve refund totaling $630 to Vivint Solar Developer LLC, AR Department, 1800 West Ashton Boulevard, Lehigh, Utah, for the following unused electrical permit as submitted by E. Gill Graveline, Building Official, Department of Inspections.
Make a motion to approve item number two as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for sake of my knowledge being new and the sake of the residents' information, I've seen these come across multiple times, and they seem to always be from a solar company. Can anyone kind of give just a little insight on why we see them repetitively come across? Is it just because, do they pull the permits before the... That's what I thought. Okay.
Can we, actually, I'm gonna ask you a similar, can we have somebody maybe from, the permits come in? If it's a repeated offense, can't we sort of maybe bump up the penalty on them? Or is it a one-set for, no matter how many times they, they do it to the city? If, if you would, yes. Can you please have somebody from, from the permit department come in and so we could speak to them? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item three, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve refunds totaling $1,620 to Trinity Solar, 611 West Johnson Avenue, Chester, Connecticut, for the following unused electrical permits. Permit number PR 2019000549 for 459 Homestead Avenue, $550. Permit number PR 20190001827, 111 Enoch Street for $600. Permit number PR 2019000728131, Clough Road for $500. And permit number PR 20190001434, again totaling $1,620.
I make a motion to approve item number three as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item number six, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve refund totaling $1,260 to Vivint Solar Developer LLC, AR Department, 1800 West Ashton Boulevard, Lehigh, Utah, for the following unused electrical permit as submitted by E. Gill Graveline, Building Official, Department of Inspections.
I make a motion to approve item as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item nine, I would like to entertain a motion to set a public hearing for Tuesday, January 21st, 2020, in these chambers at 6:30 PM.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item number 10, I would like to entertain a motion to set a public hearing on Tuesday, January 21st, 2020, at 6:35 PM in these chambers relative to a $3 million bond authorization for replacement of elevators in city-owned buildings as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item number 11, I'd like to entertain a motion to set a public hearing on Tuesday, January 21st, 2020, at 6:40 PM in these chambers relative to a $2 million bond authorization for Prospect Street surface parking lot as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item number 12, I would like to entertain a motion to set a public hearing on Tuesday, January 21st, 2020, at 6:45 PM in these chambers relative to a $1.2 million bond authorization for roof replacement at Generali Elementary School as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item 13, I'd like to entertain a motion to set a public hearing on Tuesday, January 21st, 2020, at 6:50 PM in these chambers relative to a $3 million bond authorization for roof improvements, excuse me, for road improvements, milling and repaving of streets as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item 14, I'd like to entertain a motion to set a public hearing on Tuesday, January 21st, 2020, at 6:55 PM in these chambers relative to a $625,000 bond authorization for fire engine vehicle replacement, Fire Engine 7, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am interested to know just the process of sale and where, if one price offsets the other. So if you can just come prepared with that, or if you'd like to talk about it now.
No, no, certainly. Several ways to approach Terry Ballou, Fire Chief, City of Waterbury, ADC Avagillian Bethlon, Connecticut. Several ways that you can approach maintaining a fleet for apparatus fire service. You can use the fleet to its complete service life, or you can engage in an apparatus replacement plan, which many municipalities do. Waterbury does not have a set vehicle replacement plan. So normally, you would purchase a vehicle, you'd use it for 10 years, you would assess its value and its service life, and you would cycle it out on the used market, or you would put it in a reserve status for approximately five years. After those five years are done, you would probably retire it. An apparatus, a lot of people make confusion between apparatus and vehicles. This isn't a passenger vehicle. An apparatus by definition is a tool. It's a complex set of tools. It has a definitive shelf life, and the service life of them, based on how you use them, really dictates what their value is when you're done. Waterbury being in an urban setting uses their vehicles on a 24/7 basis, 365. Value in used vehicles come from municipalities that aren't as busy as ours that have established replacement plans, or rural settings where they don't use the vehicles much at all. We're not in that position, our vehicles. And I'll give you a good example. We recently purchased a used vehicle or in the process of getting it up online from the city of Greenwich. It's a 2009 vehicle. It's 10 years old. We only paid $52,000 for it. They don't maintain the value. It's a tool. It's not a passenger vehicle. So outside of us establishing a defined plan and working every 10 years and moving forward and cycling these things through, we take a different approach, and we think it's a good approach. We run these vehicles to the end of their life. This is one of the 17-year-old pieces that we're looking at. It'll be 18 years old this coming year. It probably has 150,000 miles on it, maybe more. It's been used on 2,500 to 3,000 calls per year. This is not a parade wagon. We put, we put them through the paces. When we're done with them, there's not people lining up to take them off the city of Waterbury, unfortunately. That's just the nature of the beast. Outside of that, is there anything else I can, can help you with on the apparatus? Okay.
Further discussion? Alderman Sherman?
Thank you, Chief, and I'd like to offer my congratulations.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Do you happen to know if the city was able to recoup any funds? I think, was it a ladder truck we replaced last year?
I do believe they did. I think they sold that, I want to say, for 5,000 maybe.
Basically scrap?
Basically scrap. I'm speaking out of turn at school, so I don't have the figures in front of me. But generally, when you get two pieces, a lot of times, we take, we scavenge parts off of existing. If you drive down Huntington Avenue, East Aurora Street, by the facility, you'll see some of our older apparatus. And there's one across the street that is, it's missing a wheel in the back. You know, it's missing pieces all across it. We've taken it and we've cycled. Some of those pieces, in fact, are probably on Engine 7, the target piece we're looking to replace. We've invested quite a bit of money in a central vehicle maintenance facility. We have a very talented fleet supervisor who spent his entire adult life manufacturing parts in his spare time, fork allowance a night. We're very, very lucky to have a guy with that kind of talent and work ethic. So we choose the path to run these things to the very end. When we're done with them, there's not a lot of meat left on the boat.
This next question might be a little sensitive. What is your opinion on the wear and tear on our fleet in concern with responding to medical emergencies throughout the city?
That's part and parcel with the game that we're in. Our role in the medical responses is, is key. It's absolutely key. And I think the general public is very much in tune with our responses. We usually beat... We usually beat all other responders to the scene. And we arrive with MRTs, EMTs, and in some cases, paramedics, although they're not allowed to practice at that level, with a certain level of expertise. I think the citizens of Waterbury demand that service, and I think we do a great job providing it. So I understand that it puts a lot of burden on the apparatus. I think the service delivers outweighs the burden we put on the apparatus.
Thank you. And I absolutely recognize the need for replacing these fleet vehicles. I do have to, however, ask if Greenwich had an engine standing by for sale. You just mentioned a $52,000 engine that we purchased from Greenwich?
Yeah. So it's a 2009 Pierce. It's a... We have two similar apparatus in our fleet, Engine 1 and Engine 2. They've served us very well. Greenwich does have an apparatus replacement plan. They're a little bit better off than we are. So every 10 years, they cycle their pieces through, and they certainly don't run them on the terrain and the number of calls that we do. I don't think they do medical first responding. So this was an opportunity that we availed ourselves of, and I think we did a great service for the city. Brand-new, that piece would sell for over $800,000. And that's probably what they paid for it.
Thank you very much, Chief.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item 19. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a resolution to authorize the issuance of up to $80 million of refunding bonds as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
Motion to approve item number 19.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Mike, would you like to...
If I may?
Yes.
Certainly. I'd like to give you an overview. First off, thank you for adding and accepting this request onto the meeting this evening. My department and the mayor's office are in preparation, as we speak, for going to market to sell bonds at the end of this month. We are anticipating the issuance of new bonds to finance several capital bond authorizations that have been previously approved. And the expenditures have been incurred. And this is in our normal cycle, preparing to go to market again to issue bonds to permanently finance those costs. And because interest rates at this point in time are at historically low levels, there's been an analysis done of our outstanding bonds. And there are several great opportunities for us to refund or refinance existing outstanding bonds and save substantial funds on the interest cost going forward on those outstanding bonds. We have asked for authorization to issue up to $80 million of refunding bonds. I don't think, when all is said and done, we'll issue refunding bonds up to that high amount unless the scenario presents itself where the interest rates continue to drop between now and the end of January. It's possible. So we wanted to leave ourselves the greatest amount of flexibility in the event that the interest rates go in our favor over the next few weeks. Included in the transmittal that I've provided to you, we did an analysis in late December looking at the refunding opportunities and the interest rates where they were at that point in time. And if we ultimately move forward and refinance $43.2 million in outstanding bonds, we would generate a projected savings on the interest cost on those bonds of $1.8 million. So we think in the current market, we have an opportunity perhaps to do even a little bit better, again, depending on what happens between now and the end of the month. And I want to assure you that we wouldn't contemplate the refinancing of the bonds unless two minimum conditions were met. First is that the refinancing provides a net present value savings as a percentage of the bonds that exceeds the industry benchmarks. So the industry benchmarks right now, it's generally set at about 2%. These refunding bonds, if we ultimately just go with the $43.2 million, will provide a net present value savings of 4.37%. So that'll be nearly double above the benchmark, the minimum benchmark. The other condition is that we do not extend the overall maturity of the existing bonds that are outstanding. So any bonds that are refunded will mirror the repayment period, maturity period, so that, again, as part of this refinancing, there's not a scenario where we would be extending the duration of maturity on the outstanding bonds. And last, I would just add in that when we are going to market anyway, to the extent that we can roll in a refunding, we are able to capitalize on certain built-in costs of issuing debt that we don't have to incur twice because it's being rolled together as part of one bond issuance. The example I would give you there is with the bond rating fees and associated bond council fees. All of that is tied in, associated with the one combined issuance as opposed to potentially a scenario where you would do them individually and at separate times.
Mike, can I ask you a question? That $1.8 million savings with the remaining timeframe on those bonds, what is that time period versus the longest bond that we have left to refinance and pay off?
Well, the... These bonds, the series that are in play, their issuance that occurred originally between 2010 and 2013. At that time, the general maturity periods were 20 years. So I would say, on average, there's about 10 more years to go with these existing bonds.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Standing. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $10,127.67 as submitted by Revenue Collection Manager Frank A. Caruso, CCMC.
So move.
Motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.
With that, we'll return to the regular order of business. The following items are on the consent calendar. Item number one is received and placed on file. Item number two is on consent to approve refunds for electrical permits totaling $630. Item three is on consent to approve refunds for unused electrical permits totaling $1,620. Item four is on consent to approve the selection for Audit Director of Joseph Garvis. Item number five is on consent to approve a management pay plan adjustment for counsel attorney from the current $45,000 to $72,500 range to the new range of $67,000 to $117,000. Item six is on consent to approve refunds for unused electrical permits in the amount of $1,260. Item number seven is on consent to appoint the eight stated individuals as constables for the term running from December 1st of 19 through November 30th of 2021. Item eight is on consent not to disapprove the appointment of Daniel J. Ryan to the Silas Bronson Board of Agents and Margaret O'Brien to the Department of Public Health. Item nine is on consent to set a public hearing on January 21st at 6:30 PM in these chambers for a bond authorization for demolition of abandoned properties to address blight in the amount of $1 million. Item 10 is on consent to set a public hearing at 6:35 on January 21st in these chambers with respect to a $3 million bond authorization for replacement of elevators in city-owned buildings. Item 11 is on consent to set a public hearing for 6:40 PM on January 21st in these chambers with regard to a $2 million bond authorization for the Prospect Street Surface Parking Lot. Item 12 is on consent to set a public hearing in these chambers at 6:45 PM on January 21st for a bond authorization in the amount of $1,200,000 for roof replacement at the Generali Elementary School. Item 13 is on consent to set a public hearing at 6:50 PM on January 21st in these chambers with respect to a $3 million bond authorization for road improvements, milling and repaving of streets. Item 14 is on consent to set a public hearing at 6:55 PM on January 21st in these chambers with respect to a $625,000 bond authorization for fire engine vehicle replacement, specifically Fire Engine Number 7. Item number 15 has been withdrawn. Item number 16 is received and placed on file. Item 17 is received and placed on file. Item 18 is on consent to approve a Connecticut Recovers Grant in the amount of $50,000 administered by the Connecticut Realtors and Connecticut Realtors Foundation with no funding match requirement for the term running January, February, 2020 through July 1 of 2021. And new business item number 19 is on consent to approve a resolution to authorize the issuance of up to $80 million of refunding bonds. Is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar, Alderman Brennelli?
Motion approved. The consent calendar as read.
Second. Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Lopez. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Hearing none. A yes vote will be to approve the consent calendar as read, and no vote will be to disapprove. But all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries unanimously. The consent calendar is approved as presented. With respect to standing committees, the chair would recognize Alderman DGO Von Carlo as chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $10,127.67 as submitted by Revenue Collection Manager Frank A. Caruso, CCMC.
So move.
Motion having been made by Alderman Cotto and seconded by Alderman Kula. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries unanimously. The refund is approved. With that, we have no further business before this board. Is there anything for the good of the order? Alderman Sherman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to extend a thank you to the Mayor's Chief of Staff, Mac DeMac, and the city's Public Health Department. I had a resident reach out to me last week with a heat issue. Landlord was apparently not fixing their furnace. Board of Public Health was able to evaluate the situation, and they put that resident up for the weekend in a hotel. And that would be at the landlord's expense. So thank you very much, Mac.
Alderman Cotto?
I would like to ask for prayers and support to our colleague, friend, and sister Sandra Martinez-McCartee. Her daughter would have turned 30 years old tomorrow. She unfortunately is no longer with us, but surely her legacy is alive. So I can... And also, please pray for our beautiful island, Puerto Rico, who has been encountering several earthquakes during the past days. So I'll ask for your prayers.
Thank you. Anything further? Alderman Zimmerman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been asked to share that the Willby Swimming Pool is being renamed the Gil Seer Pool, and that ceremony is Tuesday, January 14th at 5:30 PM at the pool, which is 460 Buck's Hill Road. There's late refreshments to follow.
Anything further? Hearing none. Alderman Brennelli?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Lopez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. We're adjourned. We'll see you on the 21st. Have a great week.